So in accordance with Master by Law, this chapter forty-eight, section fifteen, notices hereby given that Bolton's only board of appeals is holding a continuation of a public hearing on Thursday, August second, two thousand and eighteen, at seven thirty in the Halton Building, six ninety-seven A Street, Bolton, Mass., to hear and act upon an appeal filed by Thiago, Thiago, Thiago?
Thiago.
Thiago Viera as a person agreed by the building inspector's determination that the storage of auto parts is not a customary home occupation under section two fifty dash twenty-one, accessory uses of the Bolton zoning code in section two fifty dash eleven, mixed uses does not allow the use of a commercial building in the residential district for property located four twenty-three Harvard Road, Bolton, Mass., and shown on accessory map seven C parcel six to three eight one oh. Okay. So for the record, we had our site walk at six forty-five, attended by all of the members present, as well as Dave Farrell from the Fire Department and the Alpin and Alpines Attorney.
And we...
There we go. Sure. Come on. So one thing, so Dave Farrell, who is with the Fire Department in Emergency Response, one thing gets mentioned that he has to do is, he took notes on building structure, what's there, observations that are pertinent, you know, so, and then some of the stuff like outside, you know, the topic at the end about the tank or something, those things, how that breaks. So he said he had to write up information for his chief to review and also potentially check one thing with the fire marshal's code, but didn't think he'd be able to have information back to us until tomorrow or possibly Tuesday, so. Normally if we vote on something, if we were vote to change, or if we were vote to not uphold the building inspector's decision and potentially condition us, you know, around the topic, you know, we'd have to wait for day.
Do you usually just have a condition that says compliance with building and fire codes? Because we could, we could certainly agree to that, it's our obligation anyway.
Yeah, so I'm just, again, we have, we don't, this, me, this is the first time we've had to do like in this type of matter, but so I guess we can think about that as bringing up the potential for timing is if something were not to be, you know, willing to deliver tonight, so just put it on board and you got good information, so.
Did you see the, the letters?
Oh, yeah, so we did have one additional opening of fact binding issues, and we have non-weather chrome in the letter, and it's in a non-ness letter, unless it came to like mail or it was just...
She, the, the paper dropped it off.
The name of someone dropped it off, okay, so. And this goes to, we, some of the questions we had last meeting here were around the timing and number of traffic, coming traffic from like tractors and whatnot, and they said, you know, generally it's maybe once a quarter, or it's a, you know, but there seems to be more frequency, and this was one residence, you know, say I asked a resident in Northwood State, but I watched this evening on July eighteen, with a meter, so a couple of points for truck location, tractor trailers are at the bond question at least every one to two weeks, which is more frequently than quarterly, and sometimes a trailer will drop there in the tractor to park the area and be trying to pick up the trailer the next day. And not only does FedEx drop off at the barn and pick up at least daily, but DHL is used too, so.
That's untrue. I mean, DHL does come drop off and pick up occasionally, but that every two weeks is impossible, that's not, I wouldn't be running this out of my house garage if I tracked a trailer there every two weeks.
Yeah.
These containers are coming from overseas, that'd be...
But they're definitely, there's definitely more frequency than once a quarter, because in just, from my casual driving past, I've seen three since, since the cease and desist was put in, and I saw like one recently where, yeah, the trailer was parked, and the next day it was gone, you know, so it was, there must have been overnight, but...
I could find the exact number if necessary, but it's not every week, always, it's not...
But I get, the...
What happens is they'll drop off one of the containers, it may sit there, but we have no problem with a condition that requires it be out of there with it, you know, each day, so it can't sit overnight, you know?
Right. Well, right, to that point, but so we, we talked to sort of sometimes condition them where the first time is once a quarter, then it's different if they're in and out, but then sometimes now they're there on site for a fair bit of time, and then they're not, you know, the question, one of the, the background to the question sometimes was, you know, so is that more customary in a home occupation when you normally have, you know, incidental, an incidental delivery, but is it customary to have, you know, such large full volume tractors delivered in a residential zone or a, in an entity? So that's some of, you know, it's hard to get your hands around whether it's really more commercial operation versus, you know, the...
Assuming it is every couple of weeks, right, because that's somebody's word versus the person who pays the bills, you know, it's not every couple of weeks.
Right, but it's more than once a quarter, because that was what you, what was the sort of the last time, so it's somewhere in the middle, or somewhere, who knows where it is, but let's say, I, we've seen three in probably at least a month, maybe.
There's, they have now been three in a month.
I have one on the road, well...
Evidence would be phenomenal, backstage, but I can tell you with certainty, absolute certainty, there have not been three containers in a month.
I think there may be a question of what the container means, or like what, I mean, because we had a tractor, that safe that we had, that came on a truck, like it was on...
Yeah, I had things delivered from Home Depot and that came off a forty-foot container.
And their basement, all the furniture came on trucks and...
Again, so, so there may be other, so again, if people don't know, and I don't know, but, you know, you see different things, but if it all backs up to the home office, basically, and that's where they're even being delivered to, I mean, you have a driveway toward the house as well, right?
Yeah.
And those are...
In situations, in situations like that safe, he stopped at the barn, just like grabbed it with a forklift, or anything that's being unloaded, whether it's furniture.
So nothing goes into the house entrance, so people may, you know, again, if there's been other tractors or other trailers that pulled into that driveway, whether it's perception that, oh, it must be for the business thing, because we don't, again, no one would not hear the mark, I mean, I don't know mark, but it's certainly seen visually, but again, whether it's...
It's necessary, I can produce records to show exactly how many containers come in that actually would sit there for whether it's an hour or a day.
Whether it's business uses, per like, you're saying, bought something and delivered it or...
And, you know, I mean, when they come, they're in and out, and so certainly no traffic congestion created by, by the drop off, you know?
No more than a landscaper parks on the side of the road.
Backing up into the driveway or something, but that's, you know, the first time I had this experience was having to, just again, drive me down that road, and then stopping us as an animal or something, but that was, or they ever had to stop because there was a, backing in, he was taking up both sides of the road, so he could get straightened out, so, you know, but that's minimal in some respects, but people in the neighborhood may not perceive that as, you know, something they expect in a residential neighborhood.
That's a, so, what's that, like, is that Sugar Road or Golden Mile? Every time, once, you know, twice a week, there's someone doing a skate, and it's continual once a week, twice a week, and then that stops traffic because it's such a small road, and now I can completely understand how it's not, that's a business operating.
Versus not his home, right?
Yeah, that's a guy going somewhere, but that's traffic congestion, that's...
But with the, when it comes to home occupation, you know, one of the conditions is known as vibration, dust, odors, flare, traffic congestion, you know, things like that, or is that, that then come with the, the home occupation that you're then trying to run, which they say potentially is, you know, or other problems which is detrimental, you know, to the environment, so that could be discernible in that, in a normal traffic day that in that residency you wouldn't expect that, so that's right.
Oh, I agree, but I did, again, the tractor trailer truck on that road is, it's a public road and he's pulling in, there's, again, it's not creating any, any traffic congestion, as we said, the landscaping department on the side of the road is creating more of a problem than, than a truck backing in and pulling out.
I guess the only thing is, it would be, if, if that was someone's home occupation, they would do that across, and then it'd be, it's an issue of the home occupation, so allowance, you know, it's like, if that's happening, you have to ask immediately, or you can't be doing it, clearly goes against a permitted use or permitted, you know...
If it was a barn, there were horses, would be doing the same thing, where the tractor trailer pulls up, but it's a flatbed and he's uploading hay, and that's...
Yeah, agriculture is handled separately though.
Right, agriculture's also exempt from the home occupation, you know, so there's certain things that...
I mean, I would assume every home occupation where you're dealing with supplies is going to have deliveries and going to have trucks, if you're not in a professional home offer, office, then you're dealing with the other aspect of maybe people coming to the house, so it's kind of a trade-off of, of numbers of cars or a truck, and again, the home occupation doesn't prohibit trucks from going to things, it's just making sure that it doesn't create congestion.
I can have these shipments parked in the smaller trucks, if necessary, so it won't be a container, just eliminate the word.
That seems to be one of the problems, the problem that everyone, that the neighbors seem to have, right?
A problem, yeah, right, yeah.
That seems to be the biggest one, is the trucks.
Yeah, I'm completely considerate to the fact that it shouldn't be contained, it's parked outside a residential neighborhood for, you know, four to five days of time. It's been one time, it's been there that long, it was due to weather, which is still only required of that amount in forty-five minutes. So if it's inside, it's not, that's, it's resolvable.
I have a quick question, from what I'd seen in Mike's letter, there's a cease and desist order in effect now, I don't know how, that basically is not being complied with, I guess, and Mike hasn't enforced it.
It's gonna...
It's...
Yeah, I'm just saying, as a matter, there is a full letter, a cease and desist letter, and...
Yeah, I mean, usually in most towns, as long as you're proceeding with the process, if you guys decide that, then if we didn't get the approval, then we'd have to certainly, you know, move forward with it, but again, we reasonably believe that this is under by our home occupation, that can be accomplished with, you know, one part-time employee, I mean, you saw the place from viewpoint of the appearance of the place, it's no different than the single family house, and, you know...
But I think you're pushing the envelope to the point where something's going to have to change soon, because I mean, you're...
Yeah, and we understand that, and I think, you know, reasonable, reasonable conditions from the point of how long a thing can be left there, an hour, two hours, is, is I think a reasonable compromise, because everybody can't, and the immediate next door neighbor, you know, has no issues with it, he's the one that has to presumably bear any brunt.
He's on a city, a day, every day.
He's either one of those driveways just to the right of yours.
Yeah, he's the one that was here last time as well.
Yeah. So, how about the, I mean, because it's a different turn yet this time, but one of the items mentioned by our building inspector was that the type of business that is being run, whether it's incidental or secondary to the use of the premises for residential purposes, but the fact that it's, you know, other retail or wholesale, which he says isn't allowed in the residential district, so it's the, you know, the retail function and you're storing, you know, the type of equipment that you store, you know, so if it's not allowed in a, in a business, in a residential district, how do we get around that?
I think a couple of things, one that I think to some extent, there was a little bit of misconfusion from a viewpoint of what was taking place there, you know, I mean, you saw, you saw there's no fabrication, there's nothing, and it's, it's designed at the computer, it's, you know, communication, that way it comes in, it goes out, there's no fabrication, I think that was maybe a little bit of misunderstanding, and then like from the viewpoint of, I think it's a home occupation in the sense of whether it's eBay thing where, where people are painting this table and selling it off, there's always going to be supplies for a home occupation, that doesn't make that person who makes a dress a retail establishment under that bylaw that's prohibited, it's a home occupation as long as it meets those four criteria, which is the one employee, the appearance of the building, the no congestion, no nuisance, no noise, there's no sound coming in from this thing, there's no odors, there's no nuisance factor involved, so I don't think you treat any eBay operation, although they're selling things online, would be classified as retail operation, it's a home occupation.
There's no customers ever, I know we went over it last time, we don't entertain clients, and we don't sell their party, so it's not, the whole retail and wholesale doesn't necessarily seem to be a business.
And I mean, the, yeah, let's be honest with you, they have like interesting things, I live in Holliston, I do a lot of this work, in Holliston, we have a home occupation bylaw that limits the space, more limits the employees, limits the parking, other facilities, you know, again, limit the space so that you're controlling the storage areas, this bylaw doesn't have any of those limits, anticipating that whatever the home occupation is, as long as you're not, you know, violating those four conditions, then it's, then it's allowed. I think in Holliston, it's eight hundred square feet for the home occupation with, on the property, but there's no limit here as to how much storage you can have.
Is that percentage amount, the amount of space used, is it fifty percent?
That was an estimate, I think it actually came out as a little less depending on what you consider gray area space versus...
Like in terms of what's acceptable, is it fifty percent?
Well, in the accessory use, or accessory structure, right, how did it say? No building or structure shall be... Fifty percent of that... Yes, accessory uses. I thought there was, I read something earlier, it was not more than fifty percent threshold, but I'm trying to find that.
It's fifty percent of the lot area, so I have...
Was not of the, not of the structure?
Not of the structure, no.
All right. This is what...
A lot, not fifty percent of the lot.
So building or use customarily incidental to and located on the same lot with the principal building or use, except that if more than fifty percent of the lot, building is often by by such a use, it should know it's an accessory.
One of the things that also stays here that isn't approved is bulk storage, which is essentially, I think, what is there, right?
Can I find bulk storage?
Yes, it's saying that, this is the definition, so we should kind of look at bulk storage. I don't think that's looked at with all of here.
Well, outdoor storage of sand, lumber, coal, or other large volume materials, and storage of liquids in tanks, except underground as accessory use, except customary storage in connection with residential use, or other large volume materials, so it's called large volume materials.
Usually see bulk storage, and you'd assume it's a lot of one thing, where one thing I have and there's a lot of individual products, so...
But again, storage in connection with a residential use, that, so that's not necessarily residential use of that, that store, that bulk storage, let's see.
Right, I mean, we couldn't just use that far, and if you had extra stuff and we stored it for you, I think that's what storage would be, this is product, it's part of the business operation.
I guess I'd say that. So when it comes to accessory buildings, so the use, so they talk about accessory building, so again, home occupation will professionally engage with a dwelling or accessory building by a resident, therefore as a use of accessory, that's true, but so on that size of an accessory building or use, so it's still, even though the accessory building, probably more than fifty percent of it is used for the...
It should not be by the bylaw.
So mixed use in residential, you can't have mixed use in residential, right?
Correct, yeah, that's not allowed.
I mean, it has to fit, I think, a bylaw as a home occupation, and it, and it has to satisfy those four standards.
Maybe it's because of the size or the scope, again, the customary type of home occupation as we've seen, and times change, so maybe, but have bed, you know, lawyers, doctors, artists, you know, so certainly low profile of impact to it at the area, and you can find usually within the home, or maybe, you know, some type of... But the reason I talk about mixed use, or in my own nine-point strength of clear, is a combination of residential business use arranged vertically, that means a multiple story, or horizontally adjacent to one another in one or more buildings on a lot, you know, seems like it's clearly the combined, is, you know, if I didn't know there was a house next day, I wouldn't have, you know, tells me that there's a pretty good site business being run out of that barn versus you going home, or they're not...
It, it is in the, in the sense of the materials, but it's not in the sense of people coming and going to the site, it's not in the sense of employees, it's not in the sense of parents, not in the sense of any of the four criteria that you look at to determine the home occupation, which again, is not limited in size. I mean, you saw it on a bad day, you just got a full shipment, and everything was there today, that's not normally the case.
That didn't look like a bad day, I mean, I've seen it with all the products outside, and it looks like it's, you know, stocked, so, so it doesn't, so that didn't look at a bad day.
Well, you probably get it today at the maximum day.
No, it came, that shouldn't have came in last week, yeah.
That was probably the day that the tractor was there and was picked up the next day.
Yeah, that was a big mistake, it was five, six hours later.
So, I mean, you know, twenty, two fifty, twenty-one A, one professional home occupation's conduct of our residential premises, yes, use is clearly incidental to and secondary to the use of the premises for residential purposes, and the external character of the premises is that of a one-family residence, when I drive by and I see a bunch of pallets stacked out front, that's not usually what I expect from a residence, and like with all the product and everything, and you got containers and trucks and everything, that's not what's expected from a residence.
Yeah, kind of the pallets and stuff, that's usually remedied, without anyone being stored outside, and that's what the presence put up for.
And again, the condition that says you can't have those visible, and, you know, as you went out there today, you don't see it, that's the way we have to keep it, we agree with that.
Right, right, and in terms of noise, I assume that the forklift beeps when you back up?
No, it doesn't. Because it's the wires that are cutting on it.
Yeah, no, it doesn't, only since, a while.
Okay, so noise control?
It's not operated anytime, that's within like normal business hours, and it's the loudest thing in there, aside from the TV or me.
Okay.
My question, we can do, it's like the fact of delivery is, is a quarterly delivery, and it turns out to be more frequent.
The quarterly number was, was off the top of my head, I can look up the exact number, I can tell you it's not, you know, once every two weeks, because the product doesn't move that quickly, if I had a container in once every two weeks, I'd have to turn over the entire inventory once every two weeks.
Would it be once a month, what's reasonable? In your history, what do you...
I could tell you from the recent history, it's been probably once every eight to ten weeks, of an actual shipment getting dropped off a container, that safe was delivered on a forty-foot truck, so if that's being tossed in there, that's just...
Yeah, that's a long time.
Purchased new kind of new furniture, we purchased that kid's playground.
But those are different than, that's not your home occupation.
But for a neighbor who sees it, he's going to write a letter, they see that as, this guy's, you know, getting another delivery.
Yep, I was just trying to put some...
Yeah, so, reasonable, I completely understand.
And you said you've grown pretty quickly, you know, year over year growth, what happens if like everything takes off, like your wildest dreams come true and everything just takes off, then what?
Scale, might find a bigger place, that's the plan, turn that into a different noise complaint, or something else you guys have to deal with. Yeah, there's no intent to be there long-term, it's not sustainable.
How does the Fire Department impact this, you know, if we close hearing tonight?
Well, that...
It would be a separate enforcement issue, I believe, if not...
Well, if there were items that they want us to condition, then we, if they're specific, we wouldn't have an opportunity to, you know, it would be either too broad or too, too general, I don't know.
So is that something they can enforce directly as a Fire Department, or do they require this, or, I guess, is my question.
Couldn't we just say that it would be something on, you know, approval, or...
Well, well, either that, or, well, because I don't think they're going to approve it, but I think he was also looking to see if it's what would be customary in a residential home occupation type, or is this really a commercial business use, so I, I don't know, because I'm, he wasn't a area where we had a live discussion on what really come on, because the discussion's happening here, you know, right, for fact binding, but I said, you know, just for procedures, it's something that, you know, you show up and just tell us what you thought, or, and he said, no, I have to write it up, there's some things, he has to look at the fire code and the fire marshal's, so I don't, you know, I don't know what the scope of his write-up will be, or if his fire chief will say, oh, you know, based on what you found here, they're in, so...
Because for our last meeting there, I think Mike was saying, due to the size of the building, if it wasn't, if it was a, an office, office building, or for office use, then the code is totally different than it would be if it were a home office.
Right, and so I don't know if that's where, you know, but so Dave took, you know, look at copies of notes, he had all page, more, no, so...
If the board would feel more comfortable, we can continue it one more time, so that way we can see the fire department's response.
Right, because I, I mean, originally I was trying to move it along, I mean, generally don't want to just keep things, you know, going, but, but because.
If you feel.
Because it is a whole, you know, if they are running a business, but then because they said it was cease and desist, thinking that they're not doing any business because then that, you know, it seems like they're not getting the benefit, but it seems like regardless of whether we're, we continue one more week or something to get more feedback, it's not stopping the business, it's, like I said, you continue whatever, you know, so. So I don't have as much of a concern.
Yeah, I don't know what position of the building official is, I know the numerous clients that I've represented during these various things is that the premise has always been as long as you're proceeding with the process, then he doesn't, then they don't do anything until there's a result, because we're basically appealing his rule, so, you know.
Well, it's, it's, it is still, it remains in full force and effect, so, I mean, I don't know what that.
And he says, right, we have the right to appeal the determination to the CBA, so.
Right, you have the right to appeal, what does that make to cease and desist?
It states it.
Yes, you got this.
You can show it tomorrow and shut it down, I mean, that's not a department, this is.
Okay, so, I, I think it would be important to get the feedback.
I would probably agree.
I disagree with that. So, what we don't, because everyone's has a busy calendar, so when would people have the availability to meet again, because it sounded like Dave said he'd have information back this week.
I would, I could give up till next week.
I could do Tuesday.
Tuesday, next week? Yeah.
I can't do Monday, I can do Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday sound good?
Yeah.
So, motion to continue the hearing till.
Let me just double check the room, if this room's available.
There is something going on, because this one's cable cast.
Okay.
I don't know where it is.
Oh, I know it's Conservation Meets, I think Conservation might be in this room. Um, let me just check the bulk of the website real quick, see if anything's been posted. Of course, my email's not working, or my, my room's not working. Yeah, so Conservation's meeting here on Tuesday, so let's, let's, let's meet over in Tom Hall.
Okay.
Down hall should be great.
So the motion to.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Seven?
What if it works for the boring man?
Seven, so motion to continue the hearing to next Tuesday.
Seventh.
The seventh at seven PM in Tom Hall. So, Brian, so we'll continue next Tuesday.
You'll probably see Nelson again, because I have to meet in Lunenburg, so.
Well, I thought the Thursdays was a bad day, I am going to be in football Thursday, so, you know, we're trying to work.
It'll be the Thursday, I think last time I was there, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for allowing us to come on Tuesday.
Mr. Murray, second to that motion?
All right.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second, second by Andy, Tom paper.
Hi.